February 4, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We will begin our board meeting with an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Pastor Leonard Hires. If everyone would please stand.
Well, good morning. It's good to be here on this day as we begin the recognition of American Heart Month. And before I pray, I'd like to recognize as well one of our great leaders for civil rights. Rosa Parks was born, I believe, in 1913. And in 1955, she stood for truth and right on the bus. And that impacted not only that time and era, but the world and our country, and the Fourteenth Amendment was actually revisited. So a couple of things to remember as we open up in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful as we assemble in this chamber in county government. And Lord, we invite Your presence into this room. We know that You've said out of the heart flow the issues of life. So, Lord, I ask You to speak to the hearts of all assembled as we assemble under Your authority and the leadership. I pray You'd bless them, all those that are diligently serving and working even now in this great county. So meet with us in this meeting, lead God in direct, and we'll certainly thank You and praise You in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank You. You may be seated.
So I'd like to officially call our meeting to order. A couple of things that we're going to do is we're going to move some items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. The Parks and Rec skate park resolution will be moved to the regular agenda. The annexation will also be moved to the regular agenda, and the county attorney contracts will also be moved to the regular agenda. And we will add, we will be going into executive session for litigation and personnel.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go over a little study agenda, but is it possible for us to do the Parks and Rec presentation prior to executive session because we do have guests here?
Okay.
Thank you.
So first, we will do our proclamation recognized in February as American Heart Month. Amber? And Stephanie, do we have, who do we have here?
Yes, ma'am. We have the American Heart Association as well as the Atlanta Heart Associates. We would like to do two separate pictures if we could.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. I'm honored to present today a proclamation in recognition of American Heart Month. Whereas cardiovascular disease remains the leading cause of death worldwide, with heart disease being the number one cause of death in the United States, claiming nearly 697,000 lives annually, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC. And whereas February is recognized as American Heart Month, a time to raise awareness about heart disease, stroke, and other cardiovascular conditions that affect millions of Americans each year, whereas heart disease is largely preventable through lifestyle changes, education, and early detection, American Heart Month serves as an opportunity to encourage individuals to adopt heart-healthy habits such as regular exercise, a balanced diet, and routine medical checkups. And whereas two health organizations located within Henry County, American Heart Association and Atlanta Heart Associates, have demonstrated unwavering commitment to the prevention of heart disease and stroke through education, advocacy, and community outreach, and have provided invaluable resources, programs, and initiatives that empower individuals to make heart-healthy choices and improve their overall well-being. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, does hereby proclaim February as American Heart Month in Henry County and commends the American Heart Association and Atlanta Heart Associates for their outstanding efforts in the fight against heart disease and stroke this fourth day of February 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we're going to take pictures with each organization. So if we could have the American Heart Associates, the American Heart Association to come up first, and then we will do the Atlanta Heart Associates second.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Tell me where you want me to go.
Yes, she is right.
Actually, we, yes. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
One more proclamation. Okay. Ready for the next proclamation will be recognized in February as Black History Month.
I would like to present a proclamation in recognition of National Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month originated in 1926 when historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History established Negro History Week to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And whereas in 1976, Congress expanded the observance to National Black History Month, celebrated every February in the United States and Canada, providing an opportunity to honor the past, acknowledge the present achievements, and inspire future generations. And whereas the 2025 theme for Black History Month, African-Americans in Labor, is a powerful reflection on the pivotal role that the hard work of African-Americans has played in shaping our country's history. This theme underscores the diverse and significant ways in which labor, whether voluntary or involuntary, skilled or unskilled, has been at the core of the Black American experience. From the agricultural labor of enslaved Africans, which was foundational to the economic systems of this country, to the prosperous establishment of Black Wall Street, which was a demonstration of the brilliance and resilient abilities of Black corporate collaboration, this theme highlights how work has been central to both survival and empowerment. Whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significance of this month as a time to educate, reflect, and celebrate the rich tapestry of Black history and culture that is interwoven into the fabric of our county, state, and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in Henry County. And be it further resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, encourages all residents, businesses, and community organizations to participate in activities and events that honor the contributions of African-Americans, to promote understanding, and to celebrate our shared history and collective future this fourth day of February 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that we have representation from the Henry County NAACP that will be accepting this award. If you guys will come forward, please.
One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three.
Okay, next item on the agenda is going to be a resolution to support a partner with Tony Hawk Foundation to bring skate parks to Henry County. JP?
Good day, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and pillars of the community. I'm here to present to you a resolution in support to partner with Tony Hawk Foundation to bring skate parks to Henry County. I would like to say that I'm super excited about this. One, because it speaks to the work that we've done, you all have done, to approve our Parks and Rec master plan. This group reached out to us because they saw our master plan and what we had envisioned for this county moving forward in the next five to 10 years. And because of that, we're able to partner with a resounding organization like the Tony Hawk Organization, Tony Hawk Foundation, as well as, and I'll call them up in one second, Mr. Darby, and y'all can come up, and Mr. Kenny Bunch, who will also be huge instruments in making this happen here in Henry County. And they are residents of Henry County. So this is really huge for us, and we're very excited for this to come to fruition over the next few years. Would you like to say anything?
Hello, I'm Darby. I'm a pro wrestler for AEW. It's on TBS and TNT. And I've been living in Henry County now since 2017, and the big thing I noticed is how much this place is growing and how much young kids there are. And I was like, man, there's no skate park in this area. And I was like, this is crazy. So me and Kenny, we actually built skate parks in our backyard, but I was like, man, this community needs a skate park. So I'm actually climbing Mount Everest in April for Tony Hawk's charity. And I thought, no better way to actually raise money to build a skate park here in Henry County. So I, if I come back from that mountain, I want to skate it.
Yeah, let's just hope he makes it back. That's the big thing with us. I'm Kenny Bunch. I live in Locust Grove. I just moved here about two years ago. I've been skateboarding probably for like 40 years, but now I, you know, I wear the suit, wear the tie. I run multiple businesses, but I wouldn't have been able to do that without a skateboard. I come from a town that's much smaller than here. It's a tiny town in North Carolina. And the only thing that we had there were like factories and, you know, just like mill work. And so I didn't, I didn't know what was outside of that town, but actually it was skateboarding that gave me a perspective and gave me like confidence to go beyond like where I was. And it introduced me to different cultures, to different people, and I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for that. And so we're hoping to bring a park to the community that gives underprivileged youth that same aspect that it brought to both of us. Because I would say that Darby would not be in the same situation had it not been for skateboarding too. So we were hoping that like, you know, by us being part of this and bringing something to the community, that we can actually like bring something to the kids.
Awesome. Well, we are excited, very excited to have Tony Hawk Foundation consider Henry County. So I guess we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just want to say, head in the school system, thank you so much for investing in your community. Not only that, you had your experiences, but now you're going to be able to expose thousands of kids to this, which is something that we've, it's really long overdue. So thank you so much for bringing this to Henry County. And we'll definitely be praying for you because you will be back, and we're looking forward to that. But again, just thank you so much for just reaching back. It's always good when you go up to always reach back, and what better way to do it with our young people? So thank you so very much.
Commissioner.
So I was just going to say thank you, and Darby, I'm headed to climb Kilimajaro in September for two weeks. So I want to hear about Everest because it might be on my to-do list. Congrats on Everest, man. It's a big deal.
Commissioner Lewis?
No, I just want to say thank you. And once again, I think this is just another part of the toolbox of the Henry County Parks and Rec. We have an extremely innovative Parks and Rec system with great leadership. I just want to say thank you and thank you for Tony Hawk Foundation for considering us. Henry County is a community. And so I say it's one community. We have four cities, but it's one community, and we want to make sure that we have things to do for our young people and our older people as well. So once again, thank you very much.
I just have to say thank you for your efforts.
And we certainly will be in prayer that you will return.
So hey, can we get a picture with them on the side? Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson.
I had these discussions. I've made several trips to California in the last six, seven years, and I brought back some pictures, probably I think I shared with them, of skate parks out there. And I believe they are the, they are the Tony Hawk parks as well. So and we, now we have a master plan, so moving forward, that's going to be exciting. So thank you.
That's what master plans do. We'd like to get a picture.
Did we, did we do the motion? Okay. Got a motion on the floor, got a focus on the center. All in favor.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, everybody.
Commissioners, thank you for helping us become a vibrant, innovative, connected, and exceptional community.
And thank you, JD.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is. County manager, how fast can you read through the consent agenda before we break? If you can do the consent agenda so we can get other departments out that are waiting, and then we will then go into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, February 4, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. Under Juvenile Court, we have a resolution to accept a grant award in the amount of $215,210 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund the Byron SCIP Behavioral Health Deflection Program during calendar year 2025. Under Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Creekside Christian Academy, a local private school in Henry County, that is dedicated to nurturing the spiritual, academic, and personal growth of every student, and Henry County Government, Parks and Recreation Department, to establish a partnership in order to enhance their respective athletic and STEM program. We, under planning and zoning, we have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for the Point at Heron Bay Phase II subdivision on Lewis Drive, District One. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Heritage Point, Phases Two and Three subdivision on Dutch Town Road, located in District Five. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Cambria, Phases One and Two subdivision on Jonesboro Road, District Five. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Cooper Park, Phases One and Two subdivision on Chambers Road, District Five. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for the Norman Estates subdivision, Phase One, on Highway 81 East, District Three. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Echo Glen Town Homes on East Lake Parkway, District Four. We, under SPOSS and Stormwater, Parks and Recreation, well, let me start over. Under the SPOSS, Stormwater, and Parks and Recreation Departments, we have an ACCG internship grants award. It is a resolution approving agreements with the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Civic Affairs Foundation to accept summer internship grants for the following departments, SPOSS, Stormwater, and Parks and Recreation. Madam Chair, that ends the consent agenda.
Okay. Hearing the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Motion and second. You got questions? Okay. Oh, okay, okay. All in favor. Okay. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Okay. Next, next, can I get a motion for us to move into executive session? Okay, second?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor. Okay. We're going to take a break and move into executive session, and we will return.
Okay. We get a motion to reconvene from executive session?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor? Can I get approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session?
Make motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, county manager, um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, authorize a resol- uh, a resolution authorizing you to do a trans- transitional fee up to thirty-four five for legal fees. Can I get a, um, I've made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is, the city of McDonough has a request for annexation of property south of McGary.
Good morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and pillars of the community. The item before use for our annexation request submitted by the city of McDonough for property located on Tomlinson Street, south of McGary Road, for a total of eleven point eight four, plus or minus acres. Current zoning is zoned R.A., residential agricultural within the county, surrounded by both Henry County property to the north and west, and city of McDonough, south and east. Uh, the request is in addition to the annexation request that was heard in October for the four point six one acres, that is actually in between the two green outlined areas. Uh, this is in conjunction with that previous request to create a more distinguished boundary between unincorporated Henry County and the city. Uh, with the notification for annexation, uh, city of McDonough also did provide a notice of rezoning the subject property to R seventy-five slash R eighty-five, uh, to match the surrounding properties. Um, that's the site plan for that, uh, rezoning request. Uh, s- it is of staff's opinion that the annexation request would not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and future land use map designation for the subject properties. Um, it is also important to note that this is, again, in relation to that annexation request we heard back in October for the four point six one acres, uh, in which the county raised no objection. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Uh, can you go back to the map you had up there?
Uh, the site plan of the map.
The one with the houses or whatever that is, what are these townhomes?
Uh, these are detached products, uh, twelve thousand and fourteen thousand square foot lots.
Are they houses?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, Commissioner England, this is in your district, you have any?
So, obviously, sorry about that, obviously, city of McDonough provides its own fire service, also provides its own PD, but the concern is currently lack of EMS, uh, for the city of McDonough, how they're currently using the county's resources on that, and see an impact on that, and was wondering if there's been anything provided from them denoting the impact that that would have on our EMS services for public safety.
Uh, nothing was received, nothing was provided by the city of McDonough.
Okay.
On that.
Motion. Okay, all in favor. Can I get approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session?
Make motion approved.
Second.
All in favor. County manager, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize a resolution authorizing you to do a transitional fee up to 34.5 for legal fees. Can I get a, I've made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the City of McDonough has a request for annexation of property south of McGary.
Good morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and pillars of the community. The item before you is for our annexation request submitted by the City of McDonough, a property located on Tomlinson Street, south of McGary Road, for a total of 11.84 plus or minus acres. Current zoning is zoned R.A., residential agricultural within the county, surrounded by both Henry County property to the north and west, and City of McDonough, south and east. The request is in addition to the annexation request that was heard in October for the 4.61 acres that is actually in between the two green outlined areas. This is in conjunction with that previous request to create a more distinguished boundary between unincorporated Henry County and the city. With the notification for annexation, City of McDonough also did provide a notice of rezoning the subject property to R75/R85 to match the surrounding properties. That's the site plan for that rezoning request. It is of staff's opinion that the annexation request would not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and future land use map designation for the subject properties. It is also important to note that this is, again, in relation to that annexation request we heard back in October for the 4.61 acres in which the county raised no objection. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Can you go back to the map you had up there?
The site plan of the map.
The one with the houses or whatever that is, what are these townhomes?
These are detached products, 12,000 and 14,000 square foot lots.
The houses?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay. Commissioner England, this is in your district, do you have any?
So, obviously. Obviously, the City of McDonough provides its own fire service, also provides its own PD, but the concern is currently lack of EMS for the City of McDonough, how they're currently using the county's resources on that, and see an impact on that, and was wondering if there's been anything provided from them denoting the impact that that would have on our EMS services for public safety.
Nothing was received, nothing was provided by the City of McDonough.
Okay.
On that.
I'll let everybody else ask questions before I make a motion.
Don't we provide mutual aid to fire as well?
Automatic aid.
Automatic aid, okay. Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board?
I'm making a motion that we deny the annexation request. On the basis of the services of EMS and public safety.
I second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the denial? Raise your hand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kendra.
The next item is the presentation financial update.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the Henry County community. If you'd like me to, I can certainly expedite this presentation for you, because if you remember, I did present at the mid-year, at our retreat, the mid-year budget. And so, I'll just do a run-through and then be prepared for any questions that you may have. This is a financial update from our Financial Services Division. It's of the general fund, our service districts, SPOS, T-SPOS, and the impact fees. Year-to-date, just a quick synopsis of this, is year-to-date, our revenues are $182.3 million. We've collected about 80% of our budgeted revenue. Year-to-date, our expenditures are at $125.5 million, or approximately 48% of budgeted appropriations. So, if we continue at the expenditure pace, we'd only be expending about $250 million of that $259.7 million budget that we have, and that's a part of, as we discussed at mid-year, from the expenditure savings that we should see some fee, some revenue coming, or expenditure savings would generate savings for us to use for other activities. So, the plan would be to increase the public safety cluster, personnel, and some deferred maintenance, needed deferred maintenance. Year-over-year, our revenues are higher due to increased tax assessments. And so, I'll show the graphical representations. This is the impact fee, I want to go to the graphical representations of the revenues, the expenditures. And now, I want to talk about the impact fees. So, this slide shows the impact fee amount availability by district currently through December 30th. Impact fees are currently being spent on new capital improvements and/or equipment. Most recently, we purchased some fire apparatus, that's reflected in the fire line, whereas before you saw it was significantly higher, a little over 2 million. Now, it's down to 141,000 that's remaining there for that. Next month, this will reflect a recent park purchase in District 3. Want to talk about SPOS 5. SPOS and our T-SPOS revenues continue to trend higher than expected. Expenditures remain low for us, but we're just beginning to have resurfacing projects getting underway, so expenditures will then begin to rise slightly higher. This is the representation of the SPOS collections. The expenditures. The graphical representation of where you see that, you see the blue line is our budgeted, and you see revenues exceeding that. That's the green line. T-SPOS collections. The expenditures still low, not a lot of expenditures there. And the blue line is the budgeted line for our revenue. A green line is where you see our revenues, and we've just begun to have expenditures that toward the end, you see them trending up in December. I'm prepared to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson, do you have any?
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner England, Commissioner Lewis.
Yes, sir. Can you go all the way back to where you said expenditures were showing around 250 million?
That's where I'm projecting we should end.
Can you go back to the slide, please?
This one?
Yes. So, at the bottom, you have that the public safety cluster has been allocated an $11.2 million budget increase to support the addition. So, this is being funded by the $9 million that we're showing positive, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, do we, do we have a breakdown of what that is?
So, we don't have a breakdown that I have prepared to show you today, but we do have a breakdown of what that is.
Okay, can we, can we share what that breakdown is?
I can.
Because I know that we have approved, the Board of Commissioners has approved the overall budget of $259.7 million, but since this is within that budget that we approved, it doesn't come to us for approval for this reallocation. However, we would like to know what that is.
Is, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
I'll prepare that and send it to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Price, County Manager.
So, Mr. President, I want to just clarify, the additional 11.2 will come to the board as part of the mid-year, is that correct?
That's correct, that's the part of, so, when we did the original budget of 259.7, what is included in that was the increase from property tax revenues, where we were allocating to each of the special service districts an amount. For fire, we were going to do apparatus, which I presented at the mid-year budget and amount. For police, we talked about personnel that was in there. And then, for the general fund piece, we talked about what was needed for deferred maintenance with a focus on personnel. The focus, and so, that was presented at the mid-year with regard to how we were going to spend any excess that we projected to have at the end of the year. The projected amount comes from the revenue excess that we're projecting, which should be about $8 million. The expenditure, I'm saying we should come in about $9 million better if we continue on the trend of spending, and that would generate the $17 million that was presented at the mid-year retreat. And I showed how that needed to be spent.
I, I got you, I just want to make sure we're gonna get a breakdown, because when you say that we have an $8 million, basically $8 million to the good, but...
If we continue at this current spending trend, that means that over the next six months, we have to make certain we stay on pace with that and not over expend.
Correct, but you say $8 million, potentially to the good. But, there's been an allocation of 11.2 million, so, that's still a $3 million difference.
Understood.
Okay, all right.
Any other question? Okay. Thank you. County Manager, do you have any additional comments? Stephanie, no one signed up for public comment?
Madam Chair, I just have one quick presentation. Earlier this year, at the first meeting, we did a highlight of our end-of-the-year successes. And so, today, we are highlighting our elected officials and some of the accomplishments that you all have done over the last year. So, we have a video that I'd like to present to the board and to those that are still viewing this morning.
It's been a busy and productive year for the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, town halls, the passage of SPOS 6, weathering several storms, and much more, all to serve the residents of Henry County. Let's take a look back at the Commissioners' highlights of 2024.
So, I wish we had not gone into executive session at the beginning, because I wanted this to be shown at the beginning of our meeting. But, we as a team thought it was important to make sure that we were highlighting the leaders who set the foundation for what we do as a county organization. So, at this time, I want to personally thank you all for what you all do. I know sometimes it is a thankless job, because you all get a lot of requests being pulled in different directions, but this is to also show the community that it's not just every first and third Tuesday that you're sitting here. You all are in and out of the community every single day, making sure that you're present and that you're being leaders for me and for this entire team. So, thank you all for your service. And Madam Chair, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. It was nice, thank you.
Chair Harrell, one other thing, there were two agenda items that we did not act on, we just need to remove those from the agenda, so that the clerk will have a clean record of it. It was the two items under the county attorney, we just need to postpone those to the next meeting date.
Okay, all right, we'll move those items to the next meeting. Stephanie, you got that? Okay. Approval of amendments for January 6th and for January 7th? Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor. Upcoming meetings, February 25th, 2025, 6:30 PM is regular scheduled BLC meeting. March 11th, at 9:00 AM is regular scheduled BLC meeting. Are there any other, is that everything, Stephanie, from, okay, awesome, okay? Meetings adjourned?